More Culver Town Board meeting to order, please. And a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Your participation will be your consent to appear on the town's YouTube channel. And at this time, if you have any type of electronic device, it would be appreciated if you either put it on mute or turn it off. Thank you. Call, please.
Williams, Clevenger?
Present.
There.
Jenny Monroe here, being in the air.
Here.
Kelly Richardi.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes? Any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
No, sir.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens, so I have a second. Second by Mr. Nier. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the award of the paving bid.
President, this is for you. It's a copy of the winning bid. Porter reported back to me this morning. The bidding was spent in Brownout, Milford. Total was three hundred and two forty. I think that the numbers come in, there's a small difference, but I think in the end, the math is there. Probably provide me some subtraction of a road that he's trying to change, but those details are provided for you inside of there.
All right.
Was the bid again?
Three hundred and two oh four oh. Thank you. You're welcome, sir.
Counsel, any questions on the bid? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid.
No move.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Monroe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O, same sign. Bid approved. Next on the agenda is the third read of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh two three. An ordinance designated an area within the town as an economic development target area, revised. Have a motion to approve on third read, please?
Some move.
It's been moved by Mr. Richardi. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Nier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Approved on third. I'm sorry.
Nay.
Nay?
Good, same sign.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Githens. Okay. Mr. Nier, Ms. Monroe, Ms. Richardi, the chair, or aye. Mr. Githens is a nay. Next on the agenda is the Dunes Economic Development Agreement.
President, I'm here to ask for the approval or vote on the economic development agreement. This development agreement is not new information. It's a culmination of the last five months specifically, but over a year's worth of work. It includes the economic target area. It also includes the resolution to pass for the bonds. The bond information has been disclosed and disseminated on town's website as well. Therefore, at this juncture, there's really nothing new to offer, but I do want to resume the details that are included. There will be two bond issuances. Those monies will be secured from increment funds. They will not come from local coffers. They will be essentially the property development that paid for those bonds, and they are at a six point five interest rate over twenty years, not to exceed five point two five million. That is the information, and I'm here to ask for a vote.
Counsel, any questions on the economic development agreement? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Dunes Economic Development Agreement.
Ms. Richardi makes the motion. May I have a second, please? Second by Ms. Monroe. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same.
Nay.
Mr. Nier, Ms. Monroe, Ms. Richardi, and the chair, or aye. Mr. Githens is a nay. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh one, an ordinance amending and restating ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh one nine, regulating the use of golf carts within the corporate limits of the town of Culver.
Last December, they had the, I guess it was November and December, the town council approved raising the rate for golf carts to a hundred dollars per golf cart. And I didn't think that it was, I voted nay on that, but afterwards, we got a lot of opposition to that during the approval process. And we are revisiting it, and I would like to see it go drop down to seventy-five dollars for a golf cart. That was kind of a compromise between what it was and what some people wanted and what I felt was just, I'd also, I was talking with the attorney, and if, and I would have also liked to add that what the council kicked us around because didn't really put it out, but I'd like to see us give a quantity discount. I know Mr. West had proposed a discount for the one business in town that rents golf carts, but I would like to, and that was said to be discriminatory because it was just one entity. I would just like to put it that any entity that registers over twenty-five golf carts to the same owner and to, with the same insurance company, be allowed a discount. I'd kind of like to see that remain at sixty dollars. I don't know what your thoughts are on.
Yeah, so we addressed this a couple of years ago, and I voted no to raising it to the current rate of sixty dollars. I think we're one of the highest probably in the state for a golf cart permit. We're reaching levels of a car permit or license plate, if you will. And I know, I watched one or two of the meetings related to this, and I know some of the justification was the cost of emergency services has gone up. Totally understand that. Totally understand employer retention and competing with the private market and getting some of our salaries up. But I know at the end of two thousand twenty-two, we came out of two thousand twenty-two with having not spent about three hundred thousand on our budget. Now, I don't know how we're going to come out of two thousand twenty-three until those reports are created, et cetera, and that's, that takes some time to assess last year. So to me, there was no justification if we're not even spending what we budgeted for those salaries and for those permits. So in my opinion, we just leave it at the sixty dollars until we can actually make a case for raising a fee, because I don't think we should willy-nilly raise fees. And I understand that this is perceived as a luxury item or whatever you want to call it, but to me, whenever we raise a fee, we need to be able to justify that with some data, and there's no data in my mind that has currently justified that. So I think it should be left at the current, or the last rate that was at was sixty dollars, I believe. At least that's what it was when I was town manager and before that council. That's just my position on it. I don't know why we would just randomly raise a fee without being able to say, here's the data for it. And I know there's data related to increasing salaries, and all of the departments have increased their budgets. Totally get that. But if we came out of two thousand twenty-two with a surplus, what's twenty-three look like? And I do know in two thousand twenty-two, the redevelopment commission did kick in for some emergency services equipment, which may have caught us come out with a surplus that year, and maybe we won't this year. But until we know that, I don't feel like we just randomly raise a fee.
Mr. Mayor?
I agree with Jenny. He's fair. Wouldn't be opposed to seventy-five.
Well, and that was a compromise with the previous, actually, with the previous form, but I agree there is kind of justification for the amount raised. So I am fine either way, sixty or seventy-five, but I mean, sixty, he did weigh this. Well, and I have voted against raising it at all, so I'm kind of in agreement with you.
Mr. Githens?
I'm agreeable to the compromise of seventy-five.
What do you think of, you know, leaving it at sixty?
Pardon?
What do you think of leaving it at sixty?
I'd leave it at sixty, but I'm agreeable to the compromise of seventy-five, feeling that a hundred's too high.
I think a hundred's too high, but I'm inclined to look at seventy-five dollars. I think that one thing is, is that we have six hundred and some odd golf cart in town. We've got an added burden for the clerk's office. I think that somewhat, maybe a way to help offset what their burden is, but I'm a seventy-five dollars, but I think we have three members of sixty.
I mean, I pretty much stand with my opinion on it, and I filled out a lot of those golf cart permits. Yep, it's a little painful. They come in first thing in the morning in January. This year, you delayed it, so I'm sure it'll be as soon as we remove that delay. But it doesn't take that much administrative work. If it took hours to do a golf cart permit, I can justify it. I just can't justify it. And maybe around the time that Karen gets the annual reports done and we go into budget season, maybe we could, if we need to raise them, we do it for next year, but we plan for it, and we look at the data first.
Okay. So may I have this in the form of a motion?
Our motion that we leave the golf cart permit fee as is at sixty dollars and then allow the clerk's office to begin administering them again. I know they were put on hold till a certain date.
They need to remain on hold.
Okay. So as of February sixteenth, we keep the fee at sixty dollars. Would be my motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Nier, Ms. Monroe makes the motion to keep it at sixty dollars, seconded by Mr. Nier. Any further discussion in part of the council? All those.
Oh, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Because I'm not up to speed of what happened last year. So was the result of the debate about this last year, as you adopted an ordinance that set the hundred dollar fee?
Yes.
Yep. And then after that, you voted to repeal that or hold it in the balance?
That's what we're doing today.
That's what you're doing now. Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay. But then we had the public hearing and did set the new fee and all of that stuff before. Okay.
So we really need to amend the motion to say, I motion to repeal your adoption of this fee in two thousand twenty-three and make, put it back to the sixty dollar fee.
I kind of think that would make more sense, yeah, since you've already years ago adopted the ordinance that had the sixty dollar fee and had that hearing and everything, and then if we just get rid of the hundred dollar thing.
Then, so that would repeal the ordinance. It don't have, there doesn't need to be a public hearing.
I think that would make sense, that we just defaulted back to the prior ordinance, and then we could.
I amend my motion to repeal ordinance number to be filled in by you, whatever that was.
Three zero one nine.
Okay. I'll just make the motion to repeal that and go back to the previous ordinance number that established the fee at sixty dollars.
Mr. Nier, you still second?
I can't, but then.
One second.
All right, but we still only have one motion. Okay, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Nay?
Nay.
Mr. Nier is an aye. Ms. Monroe's an aye. Mr. Richardi's an aye. Mr. Clevenger's a nay, and Mr. Githens a nay. Next on the agenda is the reappointment to the town library board.
I wasn't here when you made the original appointment, so is this just us appointing the current library board member? Particularly this Miss Strati. Okay. I would make the motion to appoint Miss Strati to the library board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe and seconded by Ms. Richardi to appoint Miss Strati, reappoint Miss Strati to the Culver Township Library Board. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O, same. Thank you. Next is the visitor center contract.
During budget season, you all committed thirty thousand dollars to the visitor center, and I just want to commemorate that. We would approve that, and I, Mr. Cerisi had a chance to review it, and I made one small change. So if you would, I have a claim in for those first payment.
I'll make the motion to approve the visitor center contract with the amendment that Karen and Mr. Cerisi discussed.
I'll second.
Been moved by Ms. Monroe and seconded by Mr. Githens. Approve the visitor center contract. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Thank you. Dunes update.
Visitor Center contract is done, and Dunes update. There we go. Tonight, we got the approval of the economic development agreement. This represents the closing on the first bond or the aid bond, as it's commonly referred to, and the slated date for that will be February sixth on the bond. The bond issues funds not to exceed on the first issuance of three million four hundred sixty thousand at a six point five percent interest rate. Also, an announcement, the town has been, are named the Bank of Oklahoma Financial as the trustees for these funds, minus the closing fees and the funds will be designated for public infrastructure of phases one and two. And if the second bond is issuance, that will also go to the Bank of Oklahoma for a trustee and be managed by them. Also, on the Dunes update, I spoke with Scott Dyple from Midwestern this week. What we were looking at, and we continue to look at with Bob Porter, is the area north, the wetlands, the area is a concern as we look at it. DNR has approved it with a hundred-year storm rate. What we're really wanting to make sure is that north wetland right behind the water plant, with the discharge pattern being in a pre-existing flood area, we want to ensure that we're not going to have any additional issues before signing off on this project. What we're looking at is a relief mechanism engineered into it by the water plant and two houses to the north. We're discussing that right now with Culver Equities, and we're looking to relieve that in case we do get a high-water event. But the real issue is, it's not so much the, they usually use a hundred-year storm rate. What Midwestern's really concerned about is more of an intensity event. What if we get that in a two-hour period? And that's where we're really trying to make sure that we're engineering this when we have the opportunity, rather than going back and fixing a problem that was created. So we're in those discussions. We're continuing to look at that, and I really defer to Scott and Midwestern. They've been wonderful. Not an engineer. I went to school with a lot of them, but they've dumbed it down for me, so I understand what they're talking about. This is, I keep hearing that there's only a five percent chance, but we're engineering this for that five percent chance. That's the Dunes update. It was, wouldn't say a slow week, but one that's been productive.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Town manager report.
Yeah, I have a couple of order of business to check, Mark, before we get going with the manager's report. I have a co, a request for two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for a six-inch mag meter that's going to be installed at the Culver Cove. Mr. Porter brought this to my attention as requesting funding for this.
I'm assuming that the old mag meter took a dive.
That's what I'm assuming, too. I don't think we need two of them, so it's, yeah, it's a replacement, so thank you.
For how much?
Two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, sir.
I move to approve the purchase and the claim for the mag meter.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Monroe to approve the purchase of the mag meter, seconded by Ms. Richardi. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Second of order of business, I'd like to request from the council the approval for a two-dollar increase to the deputy clerk's hourly rate. This would establish the new rate at twenty-eight fifty within the salary ordinance, and the rate is consistent with what we did with the utilities department, and it's a correction from the original adjusted salary rates.
I'll make the motion to approve the increase of two dollars for the deputy clerk within the ordinance, salary ordinance range.
Ms. Monroe makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second, yes.
Second by Ms. Richardi. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O, same sign. Approved.
Thank you, council. Bob Porter and I met with Mike Reese from Troyer Group concerning it, phase three of Trail Project and the Jefferson Street. We were informed that we're about two weeks out from closing Jefferson Street. In terms of phase three on the old rail bed by the academy, they ran into some environmental that weren't anticipated. Being specific, it was from the rerouting. There's also some internal things going on that has caused some delay for Troyer. The letting for this is scheduled for November. At this point, two thousand twenty-four, we're looking at construction in the final phase of that trail project in two thousand twenty-five. I wasn't able to obtain a specific date from him for two thousand twenty-five, but I'm assuming that probably spring summer.
Was it July before or March or something?
That's.
So it just moved out six months.
I think so, yeah, for the delay, and so it was wonderful meeting him. Very pleased to announce the IU tree grant is then established. Plymouth and Mike High is on board. They expressed interest, and I really want to take this formal opportunity to thank poor handmaids of Jesus Christ. They're providing the matching funds for this for both towns. The program's going to provide us with a great opportunity. We have a fellow that will be provided. Amber has graciously offered an office in the beach lodge, the house. The fellow will be able to do tree populations. They're going to identify planting spots. They'll work with our tree commission to discuss those tree planting spots. Our tree commission will have ultimate input into those planting spots, and anywhere that we're planning our construction, obviously, we'll avoid that. In terms of species, I was, they communicated that we have a same species. In terms of where we want them planted, so we have an organized system. I told them our tree commission is particular about that. These are one or two-inch trees. They are going to be planted. Let me get it right. Davies is going to plant them. I'm hoping to get Culver Community School involved in a project to help us with that planting project of the fifty. They also said there may be some additional trees for purchase if we wanted to go above that fifty. They're going to be one to two inches, and they're guaranteed for three years. So, and Davies is responsible for the care for two years. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity that IU provided in MACOG, and I really appreciate them making me aware of it. The last thing I'd like to do is just say, thanks, Suzie and Cafe Max. They offered free meals for EMS and fire and police in the town, and it was courteous on Monday and Thursday to extend that offer, and I just wanted to thank them. Yeah, it was. Good. That's town manager report, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Department head report, EMS, anything?
Yes, sir. We're currently onboarding a new part-time employee, paramedic, and he has quite a few years of service already in Culver County, brings a lot of knowledge in. Everybody knows Jeff's put in, he's leaving shortly. He's been putting on some classes to help with the transition phase between current administration into some new directors. With that, it's a lot of stuff with the computering program, reporting software, ins and outs of that, the backlog, how that stuff works, changing that software, billing, things like that, radio systems. So he's been putting on quite a few classes for that. Stacy Beckner, Mike Hesvelt, myself, been attending quite a few of those to kind of help with that. Other than that, pretty much business as usual.
Thank you very much. Power of the runs.
Well, pretty steady. A little slow right now with winter time, but everything's
Fire. Terry?
Just saying we needed that.
Did not say the key word.
Well, just the opposite of what he said. I lost one of my young volunteers this week. He moved out of the area. I thought he was going to be good for, he said he moves back. He's going to be, is Kyle Stones his name? And also just a reminder that we are going on and starting to price out a new truck this year, purchased as soon as we can get it, which is a year to two years afterward. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Police, Wayne, are you on? Nothing from police. Park, Amber.
I'm just seeking approval for the purchase of a new gator. You should receive that email for the total of fifteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I have a motion to approve the purchase of the gator.
Done, sir.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe. May I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Nier. Any discussion? You said fifteen thousand seven forty, fifteen?
Fifteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Oh, fifty-seven cents, okay. All those, yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O, same sign. Okay, anything else, Amber?
So, yeah, that goes.
Good.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Bob, utilities?
Ethan.
Okay. Steve, building commissioner.
So, excuse me. In December for two thousand twenty-three, building permits applied for December sixteenth compared to twenty-sixth in November. Fees for building permits and improvement location permits, Culver received six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents in November versus four thousand five hundred and five dollars and eighty cents in December. This is the total for building permits, fence and roof permits, BZA, plan commission fees. Total fees collected in two thousand twenty-three is fifty thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. I'm going to continue working on identifying the zoning ordinance issues as discussed previously. I'm still continuing to watch for and address unsafe structures in Culver, which more to come on that. I just sent a letter out last month for one here in town, and we're addressing that. The plan commission had, we had put together a solar ordinance and large-scale battery storage system or team, sorry, to work on those ordinances, get those updated. First meeting will be February twentieth at five-thirty. It'll be just before the plan commission meeting, and that meeting will be just to discuss and organize the, this committee and find out when everybody wants to meet. And I can jump into boards and commissions reports. TRC Technical Review Committee had two meetings in December with seven total cases. You want those addresses?
No.
No.
Okay. The plan commission had one item on December's agenda, and that was the Economic Development Commission report to the plan commission in order for the commission to consider issuing an order approving the amending depository resolution. And the BZA had two cases on the agenda for December. One of those was withdrawn and the other one stayed. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Redevelopment Commission.
Good evening. Mario Estorano, we have the redevelopment commission. We had a special meeting earlier this week on Tuesday where we approved the development agreement. We did it as a, as a special meeting. Um, we we did it as a as a special meeting, uh, even though the regular meeting for the redevelopment commission was the week before because we had just gotten the agreement in our hands that they thought it'd be appropriate to let the agreement breathe a little bit, let it get online, let the public have an opportunity to take a look at it. Uh, and though a public hearing it wasn't required, we did take public input before we voted and received no pushback. And so the redevelopment commission supported that development unanimously. Um, at our uh regular meeting the week before, we took final action on the amendment to the declaratory resolution, which established something uh tax increment financing areas uh within the town. As that uh was also the subject of public hearings by the previous public hearings by the redevelopment commission, the economic development commission, you here at the town council. And we received no pushback at all from the overlapping taxing units and it being a good deal for the town of Culver. Uh, to hold on to more of that tax revenue that would otherwise be going to the county and other taxing units. Uh, we were more than happy to approve that. We also uh took action on a resolution to pledge 80% of part of that tax increment financing that would be the tax increment uh that we received from the Dunes project and from the executive storage project, which is associated with the Dunes project. For a pledge for payment of the bonds that are under this development. Um, and I just wanted to remind the public that that is the way those bonds get paid. There's no obligation on behalf of the town or redevelopment commission to pay those bonds. The bond payments are strictly uh to be made on the success of the development. Other than that, we elected our officers and uh we're set for the year with the programs supporting the town council on meeting year most in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone here from the tree commission? Yes, John.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen, your report?
Yes, I have a couple of claims over 2,500. That's the one there in auto, 2,100, $2,719.28 and those as for tires for one of the utilities vehicles. Um, Phoenix Safety Outfitters, $3,494 for attacking uniforms. Wildland Humphrey, Clevenger and Cerisi, $5,162.36 for our train fee. The Culver Lake Mexico County Visitor Center, $7,500 for just those four tenants. And then Moberola, you actually approved this a while ago, it's been like a year, I think. Um, but the fire radios finally came in and they're finally the correct radios. So we can go ahead and pay them, um, $83,128.64. Um, the habit that comes does come from the township, um, and the majority of our contribution came from the. Motion to approve the claims.
Ms. Monroe makes a motion to approve claims over $2,500, Mr. Githens second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, thank you, anything else, Karen?
If you have any, please give them to me. I have two uh right now, um, one is for Julie Cowell. She takes care of our uh filling, her husband also works for Culver Academies and we, they do have a utility bill that they pay. So we're just pointing that out there. And then uh for myself, I do billing on the side to pay for college education. Um, but I do billing for the East Shore Conservancy and Southwest Conservancy districts, and that's completely separate. But I have no involvement in negotiating the bill. If you all would make a motion to approve those, I will get them by.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Githens to approve the conflict of interest statements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, thank you. Attorneys report.
I don't have anything other than to introduce myself, I'm Sean Cerisi, I think I know many of you out there, but uh I joined the firm of Wildland Humphrey, Clevenger and Cerisi at the first of the year and they've uh been the attorneys for the town for a number of years. And uh as Jim Clevenger, who's been the specific town attorney, is uh looking to wind down his practice over the course of this year and coming years. Uh, he's stepping away and I'm going to be, you'll be seeing me more often, so look forward to working with everybody. Mr. Sir. Yes, oh, I'll do that too, I do have some business, okay.
You're better with the legal stuff than I.
That's right, sure. Okay, so we do have a a grant of a permanent utility easement uh from FAF MC LLC. And this is, as I understand it, part of the executive storage uh development that's associated with the Dunes that Marty had mentioned earlier. So this will help uh pave the way for getting uh utilities extended uh down to that uh area. Um, so this was signed off on uh by the uh representatives of FAF MC LLC, and we're just looking for your uh vote of approval to accept that. And then uh everyone's signatures on you. Have to answer any other questions you have.
I'll make the motion to approve um accepting the easement agreement.
Ms. Monroe makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sardi, any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Utility shot off an ordinance violation, anyone in the room for utility shot off or ordinance violation? Anyone online? Nothing online? Next item is citizen input. Yes, sir.
Just like to thank the council for golf carts and boats, which I have yet. Consider luxury, but open to business of 30. Golf carts cut in 15 years old, I'm going to fix them, so every little bit helps, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, John. Anyone else?
I do, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Russell, 19, uh, 710, uh, Red Sunset, uh, Maple Ridge Villa. Um, I have a question about the golf carts. The academy has a lot of golf carts, the academy is not in the city limits. Do they bring those golf carts into town? And if they do, do they have to have a permit?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yep.
As well as their um, all all train vehicles also. If they're going to be used in town.
Anything else? Council issues, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Monroe.
No. Appreciate the work session today and uh getting the restructuring of our meetings set up and passing through some of those issues. So thanks to you guys and the council for taking the time.
Thank you. Ms. Sardi.
I have nothing.
Chair has nothing, Mr. Githens.
I have nothing.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens, I have a second. Seconded by Mr. Mayor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Were adjourned.